Good evening, I would like to welcome you to the regular public meeting of the Henry County Board of Commissioners for 6:30 PM Tuesday, July 19th, 2011. At this time, I would like to invite you to join us for the invocation and the pledge. Commissioner Stamey?
Dear Father, Lord Jesus, thank you for this day, Lord. Thank you for the many blessings you constantly bestowed on our lives. Lord, I pray tonight, I pray for wisdom for each one of these board members tonight. I pray you give us wisdom as we make decisions that affect this entire county, Lord. Give us decisions that, at the end of the night, we bring you honor and glory. We ask these things in your son's name, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like to call our meeting to order and ask for an acceptance of the agenda.
So movement two.
Motion by Mr. Stamey and a second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. I need to make the following announcement. The following items were advertised but have been postponed and will not be heard this evening. ULDC-AM-11-05, which is an ordinance to amend Chapter 12, Sections 12.05.00 and 12.04.03, Appeal of Zoning Advisory Board of Administrative Actions as it pertains to the appeals process in accordance with Sections 12.02.11 and 12.03.00 of the Henry County Unified Land Development Code. The second item that will not be heard this evening although it was advertised is a request from Stanley E. Buford of Ackerman &amp; Company to abandon a portion of a public road known as Eagle Springs Drive. If you're here for either of those items, they will not be heard this evening. They will be re-advertised for a future meeting. Moving on in the agenda, we have a request for an approval of a resolution providing for the levy and collection of an annual ad valorem tax for the Board of Education. Our presenter is a representative from Smith, Welch &amp; Britton, Mr. Buddy Welch, and that's going to be handout number one. Good evening.
Madam Chairman, the voters of Henry County approved in 2001 the issuance of some GO bonds for the purpose of building school buildings in Henry County. Also, in 2004, there was additional general obligation bonds that were approved. The total amount of those two bonds is some $95,550, excuse me, $94,000, one more time, The Board of Education, because of the change of interest rates, interest has gone down, is able to refinance these bonds for approximately a net savings of $4.5 million. The Board has previously approved resolutions authorizing the levy of ad valorem taxes to pay for these bonds. The resolution before you will authorize the continuance of the levy of ad valorem tax for the purpose of paying for the new bond that is being issued to replace the two older bonds. Be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Does any board member have a question pertaining to this item? Mr. Holder.
Mr. Welch, do you anticipate any kind of millage rollback as a result of this?
I have no idea, Mr. Holder.
But it's a four and a half million dollar savings.
It is that.
Over the life of the loan.
Over the life of the loan. It's a four and a half million dollar net savings over the life of the loan. Mr. Jeff Alley, who's our comptroller, is present, and he'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Stamey?
Mr. Bush or Ms. Wiley, have any of you had a chance to review all this?
I have had a chance to review it, everything is in order.
Everything's fine?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It's my understanding that these bonds are going to have the same ending date as the ones that they're replacing.
That's correct.
Anyone else? All right, if not, you have a resolution before you which is providing for the continued levy and collection of the ad valorem tax for the Board of Education. I'll entertain a motion. Oh, Mr. Alata?
Without going through all this, we just got it, is this stating that, the question was, is there going to be a difference in the millage? Is this document here that we're approving approve a particular millage?
No. It simply says that you will levy the appropriate millage rate to pay for those bonds. And your levy, of course, could go up or down based upon your assessments.
So at this time, all we're doing is authorizing the ability to achieve savings and replacing the existing bonds with the same ending date as presently in place.
That's correct.
To perpetuate that saving.
Perpetuate savings of approximately $4.5 million.
I think I'd like to add that, under Georgia law, when the Board of Education makes such a request to this body, the law doesn't give you any discretion as to approving it or not, so I think just for public consumption. This is a savings, but by law, you're required to approve the request.
Well, it's my understanding, too, that the interest rates on those bonds dropped substantially. You had the largest one with an interest rate of 7%, and I believe that's dropping to 2.75%.
That's correct.
So that is indeed a huge savings for the taxpayers.
It surely is, and we're, of course, trying to take advantage of it.
All right, and I'll ask again, do we have a motion to approve the resolution? Have a motion by Mr. Holmes and a second by Mr. Holder, all in favor. Motion carries five zero.
Madam Chairman, I know that you all are going to have redistricting issues tonight, and, of course, the Board of Education would be required to adopt an independent resolution approving respective districts for their members, but, as you know, the Board of Education has always worked with the county commissioners to have the same district lines, and we would certainly think that is going to be the case tonight, when you hear it, and also when the Board hears their recommendations on districts. But I'm sure they look forward to supporting you all on this.
Wonderful, thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Moving on to Social Services, we have a resolution requesting authorization to accept the fiscal year 2012 Department of Human Services Coordinated Transportation Grant. Our presenter is David Williamson, Transit Director, Exhibit Number Two. Good evening.
Henry County Transit has been a provider of human service transportation for the past 13 years for elderly and disabled people. This year, the Georgia Department of Human Services has proposed a budget of $480,387.23 for FY '12. This is a slight increase over 2011, and this contract is a fee-for-service, so there are no matching funds for this contract.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? If not, you have before you a resolution authorizing this, and I will entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Alata, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to Public Safety, we have a resolution requesting authorization to use asset forfeiture and seize funds to participate in the Flint Circuit Drug Task Force. Our presenter is Major Jason Bolton of the Police Department, Exhibit Number Three. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Prior to the Police Department joining the Flint Circuit Drug Task Force, the Department agreed to match the task force's existing General Operations Fund. This agreement was contained in Addendum II, Item Three of the MOU. On May the 1st, the task force's fund contained $26,693.96. The general fund in the Police Department's Narcotic Division contained $17,585.86. In order to comply with the agreement set forth in the MOU, the Police Department requests authorization to transfer $9,108.10 from the asset forfeiture and seize funds account to match the operations fund of the Drug Task Force.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? If not, you have before you a resolution authorizing the transfer of $9,108.86 to cover this cost, and I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Bowman is there, second? Second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on to Public Works, we have a request to award a bid for pavement marking services. Our presenter is Terry McMichael, Public Works Division Director, Exhibit Number Four. Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman, Board Members. We would like to rescind an award of a striping contract that was originally awarded to Traffic Markings Incorporated, and then award to Midstate Striping, who was the second lowest bidder at the time, award them that contract. Once the contract was awarded to Traffic Markings Incorporated, we had a lot of problems getting them out in a timely manner, after numerous phone calls and emails and notifications. When we finally did get them to come out, they did a partial completion of the list that we had sent them. We give them several dates to meet. They were unsuccessful in that, so we issued a stop work, and we would like the Board to rescind that contract because of performance and re-award the contract to Midstate Striping.
I have just a couple of questions. The first one, they did do one day of work, is that correct?
They actually worked a Friday and a Saturday.
Will they be paid anything for that day or day and a half of work?
They will be paid for those, with the exception of, a couple of those roads were LARP-funded or Georgia DOT-funded roads. In order for them to be paid, they are required to submit a material list, so we can submit it to GDOT, so we can get paid for it. We've asked numerous times for them to submit those material certifications to us. They have failed to do so, and I'm not paying them until they do submit those material certifications, so I can get paid from LARP. So with the exception of those two roads, I paid them for all the others.
And, well, we've lost our county attorney. I have a quick question, Ms. Wiley. On the rescension of this contract to Traffic Markings Incorporated and the re-awarding of the bid to Midstate Striping, do you anticipate any legal issues associated with that?
I do not. I mean, if any legal action would be instituted, it would be the county taking action against the contractor who failed to honor the terms of the award, so, no, ma'am.
Okay, thank you so much. Does anyone, Mr. Holmes?
Mr. Price, are we going to honor the original bid for Midstate, or are they going to move forward with the Traffic Markings bid?
We would like to move forward with the Midstate Striping quote. However, Midstate, when they responded back, if they would honor their quote, said they would honor everything except the thermoplastic striping, that the thermoplastic cost had increased since we had let the project or put it out for bid. So they were willing to honor everything except the thermoplastic, and probably 95% of what we do will be paint, not thermoplastic, so that's why we would like to go ahead and proceed with this. Because we have some roads right now that needs to be striped as well, which is an ongoing process for us. I mean, we're generally striping throughout the whole year, and rather than take the time and rebid it for something we use a very small amount of, we would like to go ahead and proceed with this.
And these are unit-priced with no fixed quantities?
That's correct.
Any other questions? Mr. Alata?
Will the contract start from the date of the contract that was already lit, or is it going to be from a year from now, or is the period of time going to be, how's the period of time going to be specified to what's already been granted?
I would think it would start, might be a Latonya question, but when it's awarded.
The contract hasn't acted. At the time of award, and the bid documents normally require the county to issue a notice to proceed, so.
The bid documents probably had a date, like 60 days, that the bid would be good for, and then if county failed to act, then the bid wouldn't be any good. That's why we contacted them and asked them if they would still honor their bid. They responded that they would, with the exception of thermoplastic. Since we're beyond the 60 days, I couldn't mandate that they did. So it's either accept that or rebid the whole thing.
So to the extent costs continue to go up, as it did in a short period of time, we'd have a longer period of time with the new contract starting today's date versus back then?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Holder?
Do you have any idea how many miles of road that we will be looking at in this contract that need restriping?
You know, I've never kept up with how many miles we restripe a year. I know we will probably issue, probably four or five different lists for them to do throughout the year, and typically those lists will have between 20 and 40 miles on them.
There's, I know there are a lot of them that need to be striped.
Any other questions or comments? If not, you have before you a resolution which rescinds Resolution Number 11-69, which awarded the contract to Traffic Markings Incorporated, and this resolution will award the bid to Midstate Striping Incorporated, and I will entertain a motion. Motion to approve by Mr. Holder is there, second? Second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Moving on to Planning and Zoning, the first item is a public hearing, RZ-11-06. Edgar H. Gilchrist Jr. and James P. McMullin of McDonough, Georgia, request a rezoning from O&amp;I Office Institutional to C2 General Commercial for property located at 400 McDonough Parkway in Land Lot 157 of the 7th District. The request is for current and future commercial development. The property is located within Commission District One, and our presenter is Sherri Hopson Matthews, Planning and Zoning Director, Exhibit Number Five. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board Members. I'm Sherri Matthews, as indicated, the request before you tonight is a rezoning of a two-acre tract of land which is located on McDonough Parkway. The applicant is seeking to rezon the property, which is currently zoned as O&amp;I, to C2 for general commercial future development. As you all may be aware, the property currently houses an existing dental facility that will remain on the property. Staff did review the request and has found that the request as structured does meet the comprehensive land use plan, which designates the property for future commercial and service land uses. The zoning advisory board did hear the request on June the 9th and recommended approval with seven conditions. I'll place a copy of the conceptual site plan on the overhead for you to view, and if you have any further questions, I'll be more than happy to answer.
Does anyone have a question for Ms. Matthews? If not, are you the applicant, sir?
Madam Chairman, I'm Edgar Gilchrist Jr., one of the two owners of the property.
Well, you have 15 minutes this evening if you would like to add some additional information.
Well, this property, we bought in 1999, and we wanted to get C2 at that time, but we were told that the county had plans to make that site O&amp;I, so we were told to zone it O&amp;I, to be able to build a dental office. So we've always wanted to, at some point, develop the property, and the O&amp;I would be more restrictive than the C2 for us, and so that's why we wanted to rezon the property.
Does any board member have a question for the applicant? If not, I'd like to ask if there's anyone in the audience this evening who wishes to speak in opposition to the applicant's request? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the applicant's request? If not, is there anything else that you'd like to add, either the applicant or Ms. Matthews?
No, ma'am.
I have a question. The sidewalks, there are no sidewalks on that whole McDonough Parkway, and my understanding is that it will be widened at some point. What would be the certain purpose of a sidewalk for one piece of property?
Mr. Holder, this lies in your district, I'll allow you to...
I would like to comment on that, because it's certainly a concern of mine. We're talking about McDonough Parkway, which probably will be widened, either full-laned or whatever. If we were, and no other business that I'm aware of has a sidewalk requirement along that road, is it, Sherri?
That's correct.
And we would require him to have a sidewalk that's just along the frontage of his property really makes no sense, in my opinion, especially knowing that McDonough Parkway will sooner or later be completed, and that it will be widened. And when that occurs, the sidewalks that he's going to be required to install will end up having to be taken out. I tend to agree with the applicant. I don't understand, if I was in his position, I don't know that I would want to have to put sidewalks on it either. That's just my opinion.
Are there, Mr. Stamey?
Yes. I was out at this property yesterday, looking at it, and at the end of, I guess, the side where you park a couple of cars right there, it looks like there was a future stub out put there.
Yes, sir.
Is it your plan to take that stub out to that back property?
That was the original plan, when we had Mr. Prince draw the property plan up. We understand now that that has changed, that we'll have to, because that will be landlocked, we'll have to make some accommodations for that if we develop a separate piece back in the back. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, but don't you control the piece in the back, too?
Yes, sir.
You wouldn't, I would just encourage some type of interconnectivity between the parcels, because it looks like that's, that right there in this corner here is going to be C property, so there's going to be a lot more volume of traffic than was going into an O&amp;I property.
Right, right. I would love to do that, if we could, you know, have a little L-shaped type of development there and take advantage of that. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
Ms. Chairman, Matthews, if I may follow up on Commissioner Holder's question. The reason that's listed as a zoning condition is because the Unified Land Development Code requires sidewalks for all commercial developments, so in order for that condition to be removed, the applicant would have to apply for variance through the Planning and Zoning Department.
You understand that process?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? If not, Mr. Holder, this lies in your district, and there's a resolution, and I'll look to you for a motion.
I need to ask the applicant one other question. Are you agreeable to the conditions, with the exception of the sidewalks, which you know that we'll have to approve with the sidewalks, and then you'll apply for variance to get them removed?
Yes, sir.
And I hope the planning and zoning people hear what I'm saying, because I don't agree with the sidewalks in this particular case, and I hope they will act accordingly, but there's no assurance of that.
Yes, ma'am.
With that, Madam Chair, I move to approve the zoning request with the seven conditions as presented by staff.
And we have a motion by Mr. Holder and a second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Sherri, when the applicant comes back and files for that modification to the zoning condition or the exception or whatever, is there some way that you can get the preliminary design for the McDonough Parkway extension and make sure that they're aware of what the road is going to look like when it's improved?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. I'll work with our DOT Department, and I'm glad you brought that up, because you bring up a very good point. Because this is a zoning condition, it'll be twofold for the applicant. He'll need to apply for the variance and a modification to the zoning condition. Now, I know we've already had action on it, so one way around that, and I don't know, I have to look for Latonya's guidance, is because it's already a requirement of the ordinance, we really don't have to list it as a condition of zoning. What will happen is, when the development plans are submitted, we'll look for the sidewalks to be on the plan. If the sidewalks aren't on the plan at that time, then the applicant can apply for the variance, and he would not have to come back before this board for a modification to the zoning conditions. I'm not sure how to handle it, since we've already taken action on it, but right now, the way it stands, it will be two public hearings that he will be required to go through because of the zoning condition.
Mr. Holder?
Ms. Wiley, could this action be rescinded that we've just made? And then have the conditions with that one eliminated, therefore, it will be eliminated?
I'm not really sure what the requirement is on the variance. If it's something that's variable, then it probably should go through the variance process.
Right, it'll still go through the variance process, but because we've approved the rezoning with the condition, in order for the condition to be removed, he would have to come in and modify that zoning condition.
Well, I guess the Board could amend the previous resolution passing it, amend the motion that was passed to remove that?
Yes.
Okay. Then why don't we take that under advisement?
So do we need to rescind the motion or make a motion to amend?
I would say make a motion to amend that.
Okay, Mr. Holder, would you like to make a motion to amend the previous...
Absolutely.
...resolution and strike sidewalks from that?
Condition number six, absolutely. If you can do it with an amendment without the rescension of the entire...
Yes, you know what, you're not rescinding your action, you're just modifying or amending your previously approved motion.
Then I move to modify the previous and strike the sidewalk requirement.
That would be item number six.
Yes, condition number six.
And will you amend your second? Okay, motion to amend by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Bowman. Mr. Stamey?
Latonya, I thought we could do that, because this was advertised as a rezoning, and that condition was tagged from the zoning advisory board, so we should be able to rescind that. I mean, rescind that sidewalk out.
The zoning advisory board only is a recommending entity. You don't have to take any of the recommendations.
Because it's part of the ordinance, correct? Or part of the zoning?
It is part of the zoning ordinance, but it's only a recommendation to you all. You don't have to take any of the recommendations made by the zoning advisory board. Your only obligation is to follow your ordinance, your laws. And if removing this is consistent with that, and I'm not familiar with all of those, Sherri knows the zoning ordinance far better than I do in that regard as to what's variable or not.
Right.
But if it's something that's variable, then, I'm sort of at a loss as to why we didn't do it before we made the motion to approve it.
I think because I needed to verify that it was a requirement of the ordinance, and once it was verified that the ordinance requires sidewalks for all commercial developments, we don't need to list it as a zoning condition, because it's already a requirement of the code. So that was just an oversight on the department's side.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor to amend the previous resolution to strike sidewalks. We have a second by Mr. Bowman to that amendment. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you. I think a lot of the confusion comes with the fact that we state a lot of conditions in the resolutions that actually are contained in the ULDC, so it's redundant. It's already there, but for the sake of ease for the public, so they understand the conditions, they're carried over into the resolutions, and that's just been a habit that we've had for many, many years, to help the public understand what's being considered in a zoning consideration. All right, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing for MC-11-06. The request is for modification to the development agreement with Tussah Hall Development LLC for property located on the south side of Legwin Mill Road and New Hope Road, and on the north and west side of Peaksville Road. The property is located in Land Lots 237, 242, 232, and 244 of the 1st District, and 244 of the 8th District, consisting of 612.2 plus or minus acres. The property is on PD Plan Development, and is currently known as the Watermark Project. This property is within Commission District One, and that's Exhibit Number Six in your book.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board Members. See if I can walk us through this process. On December 19th, 2006, the Board of Commissioners approved the rezoning of this property from RA to PD for planned development, which consists of a mixture of residential, commercial, and some public service uses. At the time that the rezoning request was heard, the Board of Commissioners elected to condition this property to the development of a development agreement, which at that time was presented during the meeting. When the development agreement was drafted, sections of the development agreement governed the development of the property and so conditioned it for a timeframe as far as how long it should take for the development to begin construction. And what has happened, and I think we all know that due to the downsides in the economy, development has truly slowed down. The Planning and Zoning Department did receive a written request from the applicants requesting that the timeframe that was originally part of the development agreement, which was 10 years, be extended to 20 years. Now, with that said, what the applicant is asking is that, rather than require them to have everything on the ground within 10 years, they're seeking to extend that to 20 years. The way the current development agreement reads is, after 10 years, if buildings are on the ground or if construction has not occurred, the property would revert back to RA, which would eliminate all of the zoning conditions, all of the transportation improvements, everything that was with the property would just revert back to RA. So the applicant is seeking to make that change and to extend it from 10 years to 20 years. In doing that, the applicant also wants to reaffirm that they are obligated to all of the transportation improvements that were part of the Greta Notice of Decision, which was also issued in 2006. More importantly, I'll ask you all to refer to Page Two of the revised Exhibit Number Six, and for your edification for the publics, I will read. Whereas Tussah Hall Development LLC has agreed that it desires to reaffirm its remaining obligations, has set forth in the development agreement to include, number one, paragraph three, which are regional impact conditions pertaining to onsite conditions and off-site roadway improvements, as mandated in the Greta Notice of Decision dated May 10th, 2006, and number two, the voluntary property donations set forth in the development agreement and as shown on Exhibit A thereto. And I've placed a copy of Exhibit A on the overhead. I'll also ask you to turn to Page Three of the revised resolution and look at Roman numeral three, and I would like to clarify or restate how it is currently written. It states, "The voluntary property donations to be made by the owner to the county as specified in the development agreement and as shown on Exhibit A thereto shall be made the earlier of the county's written request for the same or 90 days prior to December 19th, 2016," as provided in paragraphs two, A4... December 19, 2016," as provided in paragraphs two, A, four, and five of the development agreement. Staff along with the county attorney has reviewed the request and has found that we have no objection to the request as structured. Should you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer.
Does any board member have a question for Ms. Matthews?
So there's no change to any of the zoning or what was approved as far as what's going to be on there or anything else, just in time?
No, sir. The only thing we're doing is extending the timeframe. The master plan as presented in 2006 is the exact same master plan going forward. All of the road improvements that were outlined, exact same road improvements.
Just for my information, I think I read that the Planning and Zoning Committee represented, I mean, recommended denial in 2006. Can you just give me some information on why?
The Planning and Zoning, or the zoning advisory board recommended denial of the request because it was inconsistent with the future land use map. So that was their rationale for recommending denial.
And that was the old future land use map. That was prior to the adoption of the one we're currently under now.
That is correct.
Are any other questions? All right. If not, if you, you're the applicant, if you would state your name for the record. You have 15 minutes.
John Bonanno with Crescent Resources. Thank you, Madam Chairman and Board. If anybody has any questions, it's basically, we just want to entitle, keep the entitlements to get through this market at this point in time. Projects this size would have to absorb 100 to 125 units a year. And right now, there's no county in the state of Georgia that can absorb that many lots at this point in time. So we just want to move forward. It's an excellent project and a great location. And we just don't want to lose the entitlement process at this point.
Does any board member have a question for Mr. Bonanno? If not, at this time, I'm going to call for public comment. If you could give us a moment, please. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in opposition to the applicant's request for the extension? Yes, sir. Someone in the back? Yes. If you would, please step to the podium. If you could state your name and address for the record. And we have 15 minutes for public comment. Good evening.
My name is Merrill Randolph. I'm a resident in 1993 New Hope Road. And I'm representing several of the residents that are on New Hope and Peaksville Road. As concerned residents of New Hope and Peaksville Road, we would recommend that the county commissioners, that a modification to the zoning for the property located at these two roads is not merited at this time. To the extent zoning conditions for an additional 10 years would not be beneficial to the county and its residents. The provisions of the original zoning have not been exercised, and there is no immediate indication of any development being carried out on the said property. If the, if at the end of the original zoning request, a new request is submitted, and that's at the end of the 10 years, it should be considered based on the conditions at that time. I understand that things are suppressed as far as building is concerned right now. But as a resident, which is right across the street from this major development, I'm concerned about the impact it will have on me personally and on my property and of all my neighbors. So it will definitely impact us as this goes forward. To extend this for 10 more years beyond the 10 that had already been granted, gives them a total of 20 years in the future. We don't know what's going to happen in five years. We don't know what's going to happen in 10 or 15 years. But we feel that at this time, it's not merited to extend it at all because they haven't exercised the agreement to this point. So we would like to say, give them five more years, see what happens in five years, and let's reconsider it at that point and see if it's merited at that point to go forward with anything new as far as the, as the option that they have and the development of this property.
Thank you, Mr. Randolph. And I believe I saw someone else. Yes, if you could step to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Clayne Cowart, and I am a property owner on Peaksville Road. I only want to make a comment. The people that have lived on Peaksville Road on the dirt portion have, for many years, looked for this commission to get us paved on that road. And what I'm hearing tonight just tells me that we're eliminating the opportunity for SLOST funds or anything else to pick up the paving on that road while we wait for 20 years for this development to come through. Now, I commend you on getting the developer to pave that area in order for him to get his, his subdivision built. Beautiful exchange, except now you're asking me to wait 20 more years in order, or at least another 15 years in order to see paving on a property that I've invested in for, you know, a number of years. And I'm sure most of my neighbors have to be concerned about that, too. We're prolonging the paving of the, of the roads that could be done under SLOST funds as it's done from the point that this development was going to pick up the paving, and it was done all the way out to Keys Ferry, you know, by SLOST funds in anticipation of the contractor doing the paving from Old Jackson Road to that point. So I would just want you to take that into consideration. You're prolonging, you know, our desires or preventing us from having paved roads in that area for the additional amount of years.
Thank you. Yes. If you would, please step to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Good evening.
Good evening. Do you mind if I put a photograph up?
Please do.
My name's Julie Coffin Gilbert. I'm also a resident in Locust Grove. I'm here on behalf of the Coffin family and my great-great-grandfather, William A. Coffin, who is buried in a family cemetery on the land that is now the Tussahaw Development. William A. Coffin was a Confederate soldier in the war between the States. He served in the 53rd Georgia Regiment Company B., also known as the South River Farmers. After the war, William moved his family to Atlanta where he worked at his brother's grocery store as a clerk. He died September 19th, 1890 in Atlanta and was brought back to his father's land for burial. The cemetery is listed as C-107 on land lot 244 of the first district of Henry County. The cemetery is outlined by a low stone wall on all four sides. Williams is the only marked grave in the cemetery. There are several field stones which are indicators of unmarked graves, all believed to be Coffins', possibly William's father, Jesse Harrison Coffin, who was a justice of the peace in Henry County in the 1840s and 1850s. I'm here first to take, to make the developers of this land aware that there is a family cemetery on the land, and second, that I am the descendant of the deceased and would like to be notified in the future of any activity that will take place around or near the cemetery. I'd also like to ask that the cemetery not be disturbed in any way during development and that public access to the graves be left intact.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition to the applicant's request?
Madam Chair, could I ask those in opposition without speaking to Stan please?
Certainly.
Call in our division of this body. Please stand with me, please. For the board, the note, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? All right. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of the applicant's request? All right. If not, Mr. Bonanno, if you could please come back to the podium? Does any board member have any additional questions for the applicant or any comments pertaining to this item?
I do have one each, but I'd like to go last.
Okay. Anyone? Mr. Aletta?
Mine's probably more towards, well, it might be for developers as well as staff. Is the cemetery a part of this property and development?
When we did the phase one, and the property was bought in two separate parcels. We bought the major part, 590 acre, 548 acres. And then, as part of the sewer agreement, we purchased the Brewster property of 107 acres. That is the only property that we knew of that had a cemetery on it. And as we were going through bankruptcy, we actually got the bankruptcy court to release not only the cemetery, but Mrs. Brewster's house to the county. It was dedicated, 2009 or 2000, 2009, I believe, it was dedicated to the county. Because our phase one did not show any cemeteries on, on the original parcel that we purchased back in 2005. So that has been dedicated to the county for preservation back during, I think it was May or June of 2009, as part of our original agreement where we purchased the property.
And it comes all of the marked cemeteries.
Yeah, it's, it was surveyed. It was, yeah. Because Mrs. Brewster pointed it out to us and she said it was part of the property.
Is there anything in our ordinances that require the developer to make sure the lands are, surrounding them are taken care of?
It's county property now.
Okay. Was there any ordinance surrounding that, what they need to do or we need to do to make sure that is not disturbed during the development of this project?
Yes, sir. We currently have an ordinance in place for new cemeteries and for existing. The only thing our ordinance requires is it, is if there is an existing cemetery, the site, the, they have to be marked. And that's the only thing that we have currently in our code of ordinances. Certainly, when the development plans come in, now that we're made aware of it, we'll certainly make sure that if there is anything on the site, that we make sure that it is marked.
And actually, the only...
...some of these cemeteries. To the extent it is on county-owned property, that's ours, there will not be any disturbance of that. And I believe, from my memory, I've been out there before. If it's on the Brewster property, it's actually towards the back part of the property, Mr. Commissioner Holder?
This cemetery that Ms. Coffin is talking about is, is indeed a cemetery. It is not located close to the cemetery on the Brewster property, which was the old Child Cemetery. It's nowhere close. In fact, the bridge that goes across the reservoir as we know it today, the old bridge was called Coffin's Bridge. No question about it. This cemetery does exist, and the law will protect any cemetery. I, I wish, John, that you, that you would talk to her so that she can show you where it is because it is definitely there.
Well, we'll look, Commissioner. Then could it possibly be on the park property that's part of the Welch donated property?
No, no, no. It, it is actually on the east side of what we know as the reservoir today. Am I correct, Ms. Coffin?
I will be with her and try to get out next week and we'll...
Now, I'm not going to say that it might be on the 2.2 acres that's supposed to be conveyed to the county or not. I don't believe it is. But she can show you and document where that cemetery is because it, in fact, does exist. No question.
Okay. I said, we had a phase one done. We bought it. There was nothing in the, in the documents at that point.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Bowman?
I know there's, you know, you guys went through kind of a bankruptcy, correct?
Yes, sir.
And so you're kind of coming out of that?
Yes, sir.
And you're trying to preserve your right to do the development as it was zoned three years ago or four years ago, or five years ago, I guess, 2006, yeah. I just wanted to be clear about, I mean, because I heard you say bankruptcy. That's the first time I'd heard it. So I want to...
No, no. We, back in June of 2009, went to bankruptcy. June 10, 2009, and we emerged June 9, 2010, out of bankruptcy as a wholly sovereign company.
Okay. So, but, and now you're moving, you're moving out of the bankruptcies. Was it a 711?
No, we were, our debt was purchased by three hedge funds. They've kept the name. We have new management in place, and we're just moving forward.
Okay. That's, that's all I have. That's the security.
Anyone else? Mr. Holder?
Couple of comments that I'd like to make. One, of course, was about the cemetery, and I, I want to see that taken care of because that is very important. And the law does protect the cemeteries, as you well know. The other one was Mr. Cowart, and you had made the comment about the paving of the road. You didn't have, you didn't have this in hand, and I understand that. But one of the conditions that, that I worked on the hardest with Mr. Bonanno and through the county attorney was the fact that what you've just said about, does it extend 20 more years with no paving? I'm going to read to you what this development agreement and the amendment says. "Roadway improvements as conditioned to Greta Notice of Decision that will be satisfied by the owner. In addition to the onsite conditions listed above," and if you have a copy, it's on page two at the bottom, "the owner will satisfy the following transportation improvements at the time the associated phase of, of the plan is developed." Look at the underlined portion. "Provided that in the event, Henry County elects to undertake any roadway improvement contained herein in whole or in part, owner shall be responsible for reimbursing Henry County for all costs associated therewith, and no certificate of occupancy shall be issued for any portion of the developed property unless and until the county has been fully reimbursed." That's a safety valve that I wanted in because I certainly intend to pave, if funds are available, Peaksville Road. And if you want to endure a short history lesson, I can tell you why that section of Peaksville Road was not included at the time the section from New Hope to Keys Ferry was. This is, this is why I wanted that in the agreement, was so that if the county did have the funds and elected to go ahead and pave Peaksville Road, then we would still be reimbursed because the Greta conditions made it the responsibility of the developer. That's the reason that I wanted that one in there. Now, back to the why it hadn't already been paved in the section. All, some of you have lived out there a long time. But remember, in about the mid 90s, Peaksville Road was going to be dead-ended and cul-de-sacced on each end of the proposed reservoir at that time. I fought diligently with the water authority at that time that Peaksville Road did not need to be closed because it would be a major east-west corridor for that portion of Henry County. Well, luckily, we won. When the reservoir was put in, new bridge was put in, sections of paving, it looks crazy. I know Commissioner Staney always talks about pavement ends ahead, and he doesn't have it. He does, but he doesn't want to admit it. But that section of road, the reason it was left out of SLOST 1 was because of the uncertainty as to whether or not it was even going to be a connecting road or not. And it wasn't until SLOST 1 had already been passed that that was resolved and that Peaksville Road was going to continue on as a, as an east-west thoroughfare. So that's the reason it did not get on the first one. And my intentions are to get it done, and certainly within the 20-year period. And that's the reason for this, in the development agreement, in the modification request. That's about all I have to, to elaborate on. That's, I wanted to make that clear.
Are there any other questions from the board? Mr. Staney?
I have a question. Sherry, I don't know if, if the young lady would be willing to come back to the podium and identify exactly or approximately where that cemetery is because I'm real curious now. And John, you probably want to know, too?
I'm just as curious. I said, you know, I've had enough people look at the property.
Do you think you could identify or locate it?
Yeah, it's going to be right in this area, right here.
That's Water Authority property, and that's the Strider's property. We own, we're all the way over here. This is Water Authority. This is Strider and I forget who, Lady to the Kings, who related to, yeah, it's the father, Mrs. King. So that's... Our property ends here. We don't own any of this property except for this two-acre property. That was...
That parcel of property that you've just outlined is several hundred acres. So, I mean, it could be, and I could...
I know right where it is to walk to it, but on this map, I can't...
How far is it from Peaksville Road? It's not that far.
It's on Peaksville. It's on Peaksville.
Oh, you said, I'm, you know, I'll try to get one of my servers to give me GPS.
I wish that the two of you would get the...
That's fine.
I have heard about. I do not know exactly where it is.
I also saw it myself in the spring for the first time. I had no idea. I've lived here for nearly 20 years and never...
I know, I know there's one man sitting here in the audience that probably can take you right to it, and that's Randy Carter. He's sitting back there. If you hook up with him, I bet he knows exactly where it is. He's shaking his head, yes. He's lived there all his life.
No, no, fine. That's...
Well, I think it might be important, too, if we can get that information so that GIS could have that as well. So we need, we need to have that marked on the county GIS maps. So, Michael, can you follow up on that? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Are there any other questions or comments from the board? All right. If not, you have a resolution before you. And Mr. Holder, I'll look to you for a motion. for a motion.
Madam Chair, I would move to approve the resolution and the revised resolution, the latest of which has just been presented to us with, that has the inclusions of what I read into the record earlier. I would move to approve the resolution.
All right. You have before you, I want to make sure everybody's looking at the right one, it was the handout, revised exhibit number six. Okay, and we have a motion to approve that by Mr. Holder, is there a second? Second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is a public hearing, MC-11-07. Tim Jones Properties Incorporated of McDonough, Georgia, request a modification to zoning conditions. The property is located on the eastern side of North Mount Carmel Road, north of Mount Carmel Road, in land lot 118, 139, and 150 of the sixth district. The request is to modify multiple zoning conditions. The property is located within Commission District Number Two, and our presenter is Breka Johnson, Planning and Zoning Department, exhibit number seven. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, good evening, Board members. Yes, the applicant is coming in to modify two conditions, to modify one regarding building materials and the other to eliminate it altogether regarding the construction of patios and a wooden deck. The property is zoned RS, which is residential suburban, by the board on September 15th, 2009. At that time, they were approved with 14 conditions. Since that time, they've come back for a modification to several zoning conditions that was around this time last year. And now they're coming to eliminate the zoning condition regarding having to construct patios and wooden decks on each of the homes, and to modify the zoning condition regarding building materials. Currently, the applicants have submitted a final plat for Park Point at Crystal Lake Subdivision, which was approved this past May. Twenty-one lots are being proposed in this particular phase, and several permits have been pulled at this time. Roads and utilities are currently in. If you have any questions for me, I'll be happy to answer them.
Does any board member have a question for Ms. Johnson? Okay, if not, I see we have the applicant, and if you would please state your name for the address, and you have 15 minutes.
Yes, ma'am, I'm Tim Jones, and y'all probably know that I've been in here several other times the past few years on this development, and I've been, of course, trying to develop it for nearly five years, and of course, I got caught up in the great recession with this thing, and I actually, the main reason, which I think I've told y'all before, is the lender shut down the funding for us to originally get it started, and of course, you know, the market just kept deteriorating, and actually, we saw it deteriorate through the first quarter this year. But we now have funding. Actually, our original lender sold the loan and somebody else sold it, and somebody locally now has a loan, so we feel like some friendly hands to go in there and start construction. And the only two things we wanted to change was, if you can see, the, we have brick, stone, hardy plank, stucco accents, and it shows it around the entire house, but it doesn't say how much we have to put. We could literally put this a foot up to meet the criteria. These are small lots, and there's only, I went down there just before the meeting and looked at the first two, we've just started framing, they're only 18 feet apart and 62 feet deep. If you come down the road, you'll never notice a little brick going around the house. The only other thing that we wanted to change, and this goes back to original zoning, some of these lots are going to be sold to a builder who was building in Crystal Lake, was eliminate a three-foot brick wall around the rear patio. That's extremely expensive and we're competing, you know, we've got to compete with, we sell them the foreclosures right now, and that kind of, you know, it just eliminates a lot of costs, and people really don't want it. I mean, we're extremely sensitive at this time to build what people want, and you can't come in here and spend, you know, several thousand dollars putting something on a house that's wanted, and you really don't need this, and functional, and charge somebody for it. So, we've got things now, we're starting some houses finally after a long time, and those are the only two things that are just aesthetic changes on the sides and rear of the homes.
Does any board member have a question for the applicant? If not, at this time, I would like to call for opposition if there's anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in opposition to the applicant's request. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the applicant's request? All right, are there any additional questions, comments from the board? Mr. Aletta?
Mr. Jones, as far as the patios go, I understand that this condition was put in because it was something that I guess was putting in, or people were getting in Crystal Lake on their properties, but it was not a requirement in Crystal Lake, but it was being, some people were optioning it in, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Will you offer that as an option? I would take it if people see across the street or...
Oh, yes, sir. You know, we're showing brick accents, but we're going to still offer full brick homes in there.
Well, I was talking about patio itself.
Patios, yes, sir. I mean, we'll option anything anyone wants, we'll, of course, have as an option.
Okay. And as far as what you're rendering here of the combination of brick, stucco, or brick, excuse me, thinking of my own development, it's stucco in it, I guess, the combinations thereof, and it is your intent to use the combination of these on the fronts of these houses to...
Oh, yes, sir.
Similar to this type of...
These two houses have just started being framed today, and that's pretty close to the look we're going to, it's kind of hard to tell on these little black and whites, do you actually see it, you know, with the color?
And there are no homes presently occupied, you're just starting to build the first two and sold.
Yes, sir, I think the first one's getting started, yes, sir.
One of the things in the development I live in, we had a problem where the, when we bought in there, it was conditioned based on all brick or whatever, and then we ran into a situation where somebody built a house differently, and at that point, the residents were quite upset that they thought they were getting this in the development, so in this particular case, there are no other residents there that have been affected with this change since they weren't there, nobody is there right now then.
That's right, yes.
Make that point, okay.
Mr. Stamey?
I have a question. Mr. Jones, also, we had an opportunity to look at some of these houses a while back, and at that time, I think you showed us some houses that had high ceilings, maybe trim packages and stuff like that. Is that still going to be part of this right now?
Yes, sir, there are. We don't build anything with eight-foot ceilings anymore, everything's nine, 10-foot ceilings and trim. And that's one of the reasons we want to get rid of some of this, because we do want to make them a little nicer. Today, you've got to have a good-looking house, it's got to show well when you drive up to it, it's got to show well when you walk into it. You know, this is the hardest housing market in my 30-plus years that I've been doing this, and if that thing don't look good, you're not going to sell it. And so we're extremely sensitive to that.
Okay.
Any... Mr. Bowman?
I agree with what Commissioner Stamey said, we did go and view those, I think that was, Winnet County, I believe, we went up and took a look at them.
Yes, sir.
And kind of a craftsman look with a little, you know, the trim and the other things that you're doing, so I'm glad to see you're continuing with that, you know, the higher ceilings and more of the craftsman look. Basically, it looks like the only change is from two down here, you can go to a combination of three. That's, because I looked at the other one, the fronts of homes should have a combination of two, brick, stone, cement, fiber, board, all sides have brick, stone, or fiber, or any combination of the three. Here, we're just changing to any combination of the three.
That's right, on the sides and rear.
Right.
Just any one of the combinations. You have a...
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? If not, Mr. Aletta, this lies in your district, and there's a resolution before us, and I'll look to you for a motion.
Move to approve the resolution as presented.
Do we have a motion to approve? Is there a second? Second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is a public hearing, ULDC-AM-11-08 is an ordinance to amend Chapter Four, Section 4.03.04, Adult and Child Daycare Facilities, and Table 4.03.04D, Standards for Child Daycare Centers, Nursery Schools, and Preschools, in accordance with Section 12.02.11 and 12.03.00 of the Henry County Unified Land Development Code. Our presenter is Sherry Hopson Matthews, Planning and Zoning Director, exhibit number eight.
Good evening again, Madam Chair and Board members. The request before you this evening is a request that staff has proposed and proposed it as a recommendation to our zoning advisory board. Over the past six or seven months, we've been inundated with a number of requests for daycare facilities wanting to locate within strip centers. Staff has found in conversation with the fire department, environmental health department, and just other retail businesses, that based on the state requirements, which do require outdoor playing facilities, we feel that there's some concern with having daycare facilities in conjunction with a strip center. The end result is you have a number of students that may have to cross the street or cross in front of loading areas to access the playground areas, and in a number of cases, there are detention facilities on the properties that may be near those playground areas. What staff is recommending is to require that any and all daycare facilities must be located in a freestanding building only. You still can go in the appropriate zoning districts, which would be the commercial zoning districts, but we are requesting that the ordinance be amended to reflect that the daycare facilities only be allowed within freestanding facilities. Should you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? If not, due to the fact that this is an amendment to an ordinance, I would like to open it up for public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in regards to this amendment to the ordinance? All right, you have before you a resolution of, an ordinance to amend these sections as it pertains to daycare facilities and for other purposes, and I will entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Aletta, second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries four zero. The next item is a public hearing, ULDC AM-11-07, an ordinance to amend Chapter Two, Sections 2.01.03B1, 2.01.03C1, and 2.01.03D1, Commercial Office and Institutional Zoning Districts as it pertains to development standards regarding building height in accordance with Section 12.02.11 and 12.03.00 of the Henry County Unified Land Development Code. That's going to be exhibit number nine.
Good evening, Madam Chair, and this is our final item for tonight. The request before you tonight is to amend the Unified Land Development Code as it pertains to building heights for commercial buildings within the C1, C2, and C3 zoning district. The ordinance currently limits the height requirements to 50 feet, and staff has received numerous phone calls regarding developments that want to locate in the county but are concerned with having a limit on the height of a building. More recently, we've been contacted by someone who wanted to put a hotel in the county, and one of the issues that he posed is that based on the height restrictions, that may prohibit him doing that. Staff felt that currently in the code, we have no restriction in our industrial zoning district within our MU, which is our mixed-use zoning district, and then in dialogue and conversation with our fire department, and there should be a letter included in your exhibit, the fire department has pretty much supported that in saying that they have the apparatus and the equipment to have unrestricted height limitations. So staff is just recommending that we remove the height limitation in its entirety and just have an unlimited restriction across the board. Now, just for clarification, when the request went before the zoning advisory board, staff presented it to keep it consistent with the way it was written in the ordinance. So it read that we would remove the condition for new developments and then it would remain at 75 feet for all other situations. After the request was heard by the zoning advisory board, staff went back, spoke with the county attorney, and found that we probably should just remove it in its entirety because we've gotten the approval from the fire department and in light of individuals wanting to locate and there really not being an issue with having an unlimited height. So I ask that you refer to the resolution in your exhibit package that is headed, county attorney's recommendation, in that it will remove the, and any other situation, and just have it as an unlimited requirement. If you should have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer.
Now, it's interesting how that transferred over from the old to the new, and I guess it was just accepted, well, a height limit of 55 feet or whatever, but at the time that that was drafted, there were no sprinklers required in buildings as they are today.
That's correct.
So it seemed very foolish to leave that in place when we have hotels, obviously, that want to go more than 55 feet in height.
Yes, ma'am.
Does any board member have a question pertaining to this item? Mr. Stamey?
Sherry, you know, the zoning that we did first tonight on the corner of McDonough Parkway, we're adopting this after we did that zoning. Would these conditions apply to that zoning? Because he's never pulled a permit?
Because he's never pulled a permit, correct, because he's vested once his development plans are approved.
Is that correct? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Aletta?
Is that hotel still interested in coming to Henry County?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
It's actually in your district, Mr. Aletta.
That's very good, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, since this is an amendment to an ordinance, I would like to ask if there's anyone in the audience who wishes to address this item. All right, no one is stepping forward, so with that, I will entertain a motion to approve the ordinance. Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. The final item under planning and zoning is a resolution extending the moratorium for the adult entertainment establishments in the unincorporated areas of Henry County. Michael Harris, Planning and Zoning Services Division Director, is our presenter, and that's handout number two. Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman, good evening, Board members. Over the last several months, staff has been working on researching all the various elements associated with this, with this ordinance, and during that time, staff has developed for consideration several different proposals and proposed amendments to our current, to our current ordinance. As Georgia law recognizes that local governments may impose and extend moratoria on zoning decisions, building permits, other development approvals, where the interests of the public require such action and where such actions implemented in a manner which is reasonably necessary and not induly oppressive, staff is, and due to the scope and complexity of the ordinance that associated with this particular ordinance, staff has requested authorization to extend our current moratorium to the date of September 6th this year, to allow staff opportunity to, you know, as we've gone through and developed different proposals, want to make sure we vet those, all the proposals with the different departments and personnel that it also affects. I'm sure we've gone through and had opportunity to speak with each one of them and gotten their input as well before we present it fully back to the board. So at this time, staff is requesting authorization to extend the moratorium to September 6th of this year.
And I would like to reiterate, and we've said this in the other two meetings that we've had pertaining to this item, no adult entertainment establishment has made an application to Henry County to, to start a business here. This is simply preemptive to try to put into place the most restrictive, yet legal, ordinance pertaining to that type of establish, so that we, establishment so that we can protect the health, safety, and the welfare of our public. And so that is the reason why it's being considered.
That's right.
No one has put in an application. I know every time we hear this, we get a flood of emails with people who are concerned about it, and so I felt like it was important to stress that to the public. Does any board member have a question or comment? Mr. Aletta?
Since we extended it only because we had a board meeting date to tie in with the extension, I would assume that the September 6th is a board meeting day.
Yes, it is. That's a date of a regularly scheduled board meeting.
That's all, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, you have before you a resolution to extend the moratorium pertaining to the adult entertainment establishments until September 6th of 2011. I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. At this time, we are going to have a discussion regarding the redistricting map for the Board of Commission Districts and the Board of Education Districts, which is exhibit number 10 in our book. Our county attorney, Latonya Wiley, will be presenting that. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. Tonight, we're going to discuss and review the latest version of the proposed redistricting map for the Henry County Board of Commissioners. The county clerk is passing out some documents and handouts for the board's review as well as the members of the audience that will help us in our discussion. And those documents consist of 2,000 census data information, and on the flip side of that will be the 2010 census data information, an eight-and-a-half-by-eleven handout of the map that is on the overhead projector on the easel. the map that is on the overhead projector on the easel and that is currently displayed on the county's website. The stat sheet for that map, and the stat sheet just has all the relevant data that the Department of Justice will look at, so each of those handouts are being distributed by the clerk for everyone tonight, so we give her a little time to. And just as a matter of recall, in a previous meeting with the Board of Education, the Board of Commissioners, y'all will recall that there was one map that was discussed and produced at that meeting, never formally voted on, but just a point of discussion. And during that meeting, Commissioner Bowman presented a map that for, that he wanted considered for ultimate discussion and consideration. That map, from that map, we have come to the map that we're going to discuss tonight, and that is the map that we're currently going to discuss and have our public hearing, public comment on. The map that was discussed at the joint BLC-BOE meeting initially is currently on the county's website as well for members of the public to see. I briefly discussed the legal principles applicable to this redistricting process at the last meeting. I just want to go over it briefly tonight with you all. Every 10 years, as following the census, local governments and state governments across the country have the obligation to engage in the redistricting process. And that is the process of drawing the electoral district boundaries that are made necessary in response to population growth. And as we all know, Henry County experienced tremendous growth over the past decade, and while that growth has slowed in recent times, during this 10-year process, Henry County went from having a population of 119,000 people in the county in 2000 to 203,000 people in the county in 2010. So more than 80,000 new people have moved into this county over the 10, past 10-year The legal criteria that we're going to be governed by in this process are mainly two. One is found in the United States Constitution, the one-person-one-vote standard, and secondly, the second one is the Voting Rights Act, which is a federal statute that has been in place since 1965. Under the one-person-one-vote requirement, basically that requires that there have, that electoral bodies be have, be consistent of substantially equal population size, and this is also known as the ideal population size. You don't have to have exact equality, but local governments should strive to have, create districts that are pretty evenly balanced as much as possible, with no more than a 10% deviation between the amount of people in the most heavily populated district and the amount of people in the least populated district. So with the growth in Henry County, the 203,000 number that we have, the ideal population size divided by the five districts is 40,784 people. So we, as we move forward in this regard, we strove to make sure that the districts, all five districts were roughly within that criteria, no more than 10% deviation. The handout that has the 2,000 census data and 2010 census data on the backside really reflects how this growth has manifested itself during the county. In terms of the district population size, District 1 in 2000 had 23,207 people, and today, District 1 has 48,842 people in District 1. In 2000, District 2 had 24,003 people within its boundaries, and today, District 2 has 50,849 citizens. In 2000, District 3 consisted of 23,230 citizens, and today, District 3 has 39,029 citizens. In 2000, District 4 had 24,345 citizens, and today, District 4 has 32,266 persons. And in 2000, District 5 consisted of 24,556 persons, and today, District 5 has 33,296 persons. So again, under today's census numbers, District 1, 48,842 people, it's about 8,000 over the amount of the ideal population size. District 2, 50,849 citizens, it's well over, it's over 10,000 folks more than the ideal population size. District 3, 39,029, it's fairly close to the ideal population size. District 4, 32,266 persons, still well below the 40,000 ideal population size. And District 5, 33,296 persons, about 7,000 folks short of meeting that ideal population size. So the one-person-one-vote standard is really materialized, or the need to readjust these boundary lines to meet that standard is ever-present by these numbers. The second legal requirement under the Voting Rights Act, as we all know, that's a law that's been in effect since 1965, and was last reauthorized by Congress in 2006, and must be presently complied with when redistricting. Now, the purpose and intent of the Voting Rights Act is to ensure that anything that has the, anything dealing with the voting of minorities not be impacted in a negative way. So compliance with the Voting Rights Act necessarily draws us into a discussion about race when we're discussing the Voting Rights Act, because that is what we're going to have to demonstrate to the Justice Department as we move forward in this process. And I will add that if you look at the 2,000 census and 2010 census data, it will show that the minority population in Henry County has more than doubled in the past 10 years. It went from approximately 15% to 38% of the county's present population consists of minorities, and that's, when I say minorities, all apart black, and that doesn't include other groups such as Hispanics, which is not something that presently the Department of Justice considers when it reviews our map. Two components to the Voting Rights Act, preclearance, we'll have to submit the map as approved by this body, and then hopefully by the General Assembly, and when they go into special session this fall, we will have to submit the map to the Justice Department for preclearance, and we do that for all of our local legislation. Georgia is one of the covered jurisdictions, still having to engage in that process. For instance, we had a lot of local legislation that was passed in the last legislative session, and we had to submit all of those to the Justice Department for preclearance. And even such things as our precinct change locations, our SLOTH referendum, anything that goes on that ballot that has to do with voting, we, even if we change the term limits or do anything that could potentially affect voting, we submit those changes to the Justice Department, and this redistricting map will be amongst the changes, amongst one of those changes. The second aspect of the Voting Rights Act is Section 2, which deals with the effects of making any change that will have a negative impact on minorities. And basically, what that requires is a review by the Justice Department to see if the proposed map has the effect of reducing the opportunity of members of a covered minority to participate in the political process. And in simpler terms, it just prevents, it looks, the Justice Department will look to see whether or not there is being a fracturing on the vote or packing on the vote, minority vote, and will look at how the minority population is distributed throughout those districts. So on the map that is before you, there are percentage numbers shown on the map for each district, and that percentage number represents the percentage of minorities within that district. And we did that because that is something that we're going to have to demonstrate and show that we're in compliance with. And I will say, though, if you look at the 2010 census distribution numbers, that Henry County really is a fortunate community, and that we are truly a diverse community. We have minorities throughout the county, minorities and members of, who are not minorities, citizens, living together, working together, and so there is not a section of the county that is more predominant black or more predominant white. We really have a pretty even distribution before we start the redistricting process. The redistricting process forces us to look at race as a component, not as a predominant factor, but it's something we need to consider, and given the amount of growth in that area, it's something that the Justice Department will likely consider as well. There are a number of other criteria, though, that we have looked at when the consultant that was hired gave us advice on how to do our map, and when we had the assistance of state representatives and who helped in this regard, but we've tried to draw the map using identifiable boundaries, attempting to use whole voting districts, voting districts where possible, maintaining communities of interest, attempting where possible to stay within existing districts to the extent possible, adopting districts of equal size, of course, and I spoke to that, drawing districts that are compact and contiguous. In previous cases in other jurisdictions, there have been challenges in the courts where lines were drawn that just didn't make any sense geographically, that it just didn't look natural. So I think the map that's before you tonight has very natural boundaries and looks like something that is not strained or something that does not make logical sense just geographically. And of course, we attempted to comply with the Voting Rights Act, and those were all the criteria that we considered as this map was being developed. And so with that, I guess I'll just, one of the handouts that we have before you that's entitled July 19th Public Hearing, the Population Summary Report, shows by district the population in each of the district. District 1 has a population of 40,456 persons, very close to the ideal population size I spoke of earlier. District 2, 41,150 persons. District 3, 40,708 persons. District 4, 40,364 persons. And District 5, 41,244 persons. So as far as the population size, meaning that one-person-one-vote standard, as you can see on this particular map, brings the individual districts in line with one another. If you move over to the column that says percent A/P-black, that's all apart black, that is what the Justice Department will look at when they're looking at our map, one of the things they'll look at, and as you can see, those numbers that are shown there are reflected by district, and it also breaks it down by over 18 population vote. And I'll state for those citizens who are not here tonight, we'll have the stat sheet as well, we'll have all of the documents that we are distributing tonight in handouts. We will have those on the website as well. I think that will be helpful for citizens to look at and review. This map has a very low median deviation range, well below the 10%, and this process, as I indicated, will end with you all voting on this at a scheduled board meeting, voting to send it to the Georgia Legislature for their August 15th session, special session. The General Assembly, our local delegation, will approve a map, come back, it will come back to us, and we'll submit it up to the Justice Department for review and the preclearance process. During that interim period, after you all vote on this, we will again post the map that was, that has been approved on the county website and at various public places, libraries throughout the county, so that members of the public can come by and look at it and see it during that timeframe. And with that, that concludes my presentation of the map, and I will open this back up to members of the board to comment as you see fit and take public comment.
Just wanted to make a couple of comments, because this was rather challenging to meet all the criteria that we have to meet, and some of the other things that we were trying to do is to bring all the districts over so they had a portion of I-75, because that's the big economic engine for the county, and it gives each district an opportunity to participate in some economic development within their own districts. And then the other challenge was trying to keep the incumbents from the Board of Education and the Board of Commissioners with a district that they could continue to represent going forward. And I know Mr. Welch was here earlier, speaking on behalf of the Board of Education. The only request I had from the chairman of that Board of Education was that whatever map that the Board of Commissioners decided upon, they wanted to make sure that our district lines were all the same, and that cuts down on voter confusion. And that brings up another point, because I want to make a comment here, too. When we're talking about redistricting, I want to make sure the public understands we're not talking about school attendance lines. That brings out a lot of passion, and that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about commission districts and Board of Education districts, and not, has nothing to do with the attendance lines for schools. So I just wanted to make that comment. Does any board member have?
You're right, Madam Chair. The first map, I think we, there have been several maps, but the first map, you had to have a starting point. We had to have a starting point, and the first map did not have the Board of Education and Board of Commissioners residing within the same voting districts, so that you have your district. Currently, the District 3 Commissioner is in the same district as, has the same, shares the same boundaries with the District 3 Board of Education member, and that's how it is for all, all five of the school board members and the district and commissioners. They each have that, they share the boundary lines. And so that was the first map that did not do that. And then, as we progress to the point where we are now, this present map keeps everyone together, which I know our election superintendent is very happy about, and has, that's her only comment, because she wants to keep down voter confusion, because it does create that, and it also is very costly trying to do the, they've used the lingo, the combos, and having the various combos that will be required if you separate it out, those two elected bodies.
Does any board member have a question or comment before I open it up to the public? Okay, at this time, because this is a public hearing, I've set 15 minutes aside, and I know we had several people that signed up for public comment to speak on redistricting, but instead of waiting till the end of the meeting, now is the time for public comment on this item. So if you're here and you wish to speak on redistricting, if you would, please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record, and we have 15 minutes for public comment.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. My name is Michael Burns. I live at 313 Galahad Court in McDonough, 30252. Upon a close review of the map, it appears to me that what has been done as a majority-minority district has been artificially created. When I look at the way the lines were drawn previous to this, no such distribution occurred. So that creates a unfair distribution of that particular group within those newly drawn lines. There was never a majority-minority population before, and for lines to be drawn to create that disrupts that demographic that was created by people moving naturally into those areas. You've created a district where there's an overrepresentation in one, and then in a corresponding district, which is District 4, there's an underrepresentation, upper underrepresentation in District 4. When I take a look at the previous distribution map, and I take a look at how things were divided, there was a much more equal distribution between District 5 and District 4 than currently exists in this particular redrawn district lines. That's one. The second issue I have is to say that the school district lines in the county- The second issue I have is to say that the school district lines and the county commissioner lines must be in alignment, must match. That's neither required by law nor is it a condition of the Voting Rights Act. And I would submit to you that when I go to the polls and vote, I have to worry about lots of lines. There's congressional district lines, there's county commissioner lines. I'm in the voting area of McDonough, but I'm not a citizen of the city of McDonough, so I have to be aware of that. There's a lot of different geographic distributions that I have to pay attention to, so to say that the school district lines have to match up with the county district lines, I think it's a disservice to the voting public to say that they don't match perfectly, we can't necessarily figure it out. I don't necessarily agree with that. But for that to be the driver by which these lines were drawn, you've created an unfair distribution that previous to this didn't exist. And previous renditions of this map I saw prior to this, it didn't exist in that either. I'm not saying that it rises to the level of gerrymandering, but I will say that we've created a situation where there is a much safer district based on the distribution of the ethnic population than it was in previous revisions of the map. So I've got a definite issue with the way that that was distributed. I understand that when the county commissioner does that, she's got a significant balancing act with respect to population, with respect to numbers. But to shove a overabundance of minorities in one district, which causes an underrepresentation, upper representation in another district, that didn't exist prior to this, I would tell you that has done more harm than good, and I don't necessarily know that that's going to be consistent with what the Department of Justice wants to see. I think it's inconsistent with what they want to see. I think if we want to get from under the purview and the requirements of the Voting Rights Act, that it's more important that we take a look at the spirit of the intent of the law rather than try our fair way of how to just meet the needs of the law. I think these lines were drawn to get around the act or to satisfy the act rather than the lines that were previously drawn in earlier revisions of this, which were much more consistent with communities' interests and much more consistent with the distribution based on previous lines and the way that people naturally moved into these areas. So those are my concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this item?
My name is Carlotta Harrell, and I live at 261 Hunting Court. That is the Lake Spivey community. When you talk about the requirements under the Voting Rights Act and keeping communities of interest together, I think with the redrawing of this map here, I agree with the gentleman that just finished speaking, that you tend to break up those communities of interest. The Lake Spivey, I'm here to represent the Lake Spivey Community Association, which represents twenty-three homeowners associations that encompasses Clayton and Henry County. And we have more interests within our community, and we're going to be redistrict into District Five. And so I think there, when you talk about keeping communities of interest together, you have done a disservice to our community. And so we're not happy about that. That's the first point. And I don't know if all of you all know where the Spivey community is, but of course, it's on the northern part of the county. The other thing that we tend to see with this map is the lining up of districts to disenfranchise communities as well as setting up certain persons to run in a particular district. And in the nineties, when, in the nineties when they had the redistricting, the redistricting affected the one African-American commissioner that was on the board. And it's taken us twenty years to get back to the point where you can, we have an African-American sitting on the board right now. And so to break up District Four from the forty-six percent of African-Americans that live in that district to the forty percent, again, I think that it's about trying to set up districts to have certain people to run. With regards to the school board, there is no law that says that the school boards have to be aligned with the commission districts. And so the school board sits by itself, and if they have separate districts, then so be it. The other concern that we have is, I just really think that the board should really consider the percentages that are currently represented in the district. We talk about trying to balance numbers because, of course, Commission District Two now has ten thousand-plus population, but the way the map is drawn, and is it okay if I show something here?
You just kind of speak toward the microphone as you do that.
This is currently where the Spivey community is, right here. And District Two is cutting down into District One. So to me, it would make sense that this part of, that's currently commissioned to stay where it is and maybe look at the numbers on this area and push the map back around. It seemed like, you guys, it seemed like in drawing this map, they took Kellytown out of District Five on purpose. So basically, to sum it up, our community does not necessarily support or agree with this map. If it goes to the Justice Department, we will be there to file a complaint or suit or whatever we have to do because our community does not support this map. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Good evening. Would you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, my name is Frederick Gardner. I reside at 410 Gresham Drive, Stockbridge, Georgia, what was formerly District Two if this map is approved. Now, I'm saying that we're moving into District Five. I concur with the lady that spoke earlier as it relates to fifty-one percent of the voting being put into District Five to include the area that was once the Spivey and Walt Stevens area. Why not distribute that number back into where it was into previous District Five and allow for us to stay in District Two? That's my concern, and the number would still match. I would also like, I don't know how the process was done, but was this done in a session where the consultant actually moved the map around, which you guys sit in here in public view? Was that the process that was done? I know that's what we did in our jurisdiction that I work in. We were in the public, the map was moved around, and everybody had a vote to say, even the public had a vote to look at how the map was doing, and as the lines were shifting, the populations were shifting to verify, yes, we are meeting the intent of the ten percent spirit in terms of deviation. But I am very concerned that District Five now leads south of I-75, and I understand the comment about economic development. I think economic development doesn't shift with a district line, it shifts with how you plan, line use planning, comprehensive planning, strategic planning, versus how the population shift to allow for each district to have economic development. I think each district under the current comprehensive plan, correct me if I'm wrong, includes activity centers, which are economic engines in and of themselves. So as we look at that, I would hope that you guys would look at adjusting that fifty-one percent and keeping us in District Two. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in regards to the proposed redistricting map? Ms. Wiley, is there any additional comments that you would like to add?
Just a few. I know Commissioner Holmes has had a couple of, has had a couple of town hall meetings, and so it has been a good thing that citizens have come out and engaged in this process. I think that's just a wonderful thing, just as people have come out tonight to make comments. On the BOC BoE lines, it is true that there is no legal requirement. I don't think anyone here tonight or any previous meeting has suggested that the BOC has to have the same district lines with the BoE members. That's not what we're saying. It is a preference, a local preference, and according to our consultant, Lynda Mager, she has indicated that in her thirty-plus-year experience where there is an equal number of Board of Education members and Board of Commissioners, that most counties do have the shared lines. So we're not doing anything that's untoward or something that is not regularly done in other counties. District Five will be a majority-minority district, that is true. I don't think the lines are artificially drawn, but it is true. Given the increase in the minority population in this county over the past ten years, that was bound to happen at some point. Most of the, a majority of the folks who spoke, talked about District Two being moved out of District Two into District Five. Well, District Two had, was the largest district. District Two had to lose people. We just couldn't keep the one person, one vote standard, Commissioner Lynda, you couldn't keep all your citizens in your district. The area that's here is not heavily populated. So to shift downward, even if you try to shift downward into District One, to bring District Two down, you weren't going to be able to lose people because there aren't, there are more, there's more wild land, open land in District One and in the southern part of District Two. So moving downward would not have alleviated the ten thousand-person overreach that existed in District, that exists in District Two. And with that, I don't have any other comments to make tonight unless the board has questions with me.
Okay, does anyone have a question for Latonya? All right, Eric, did you want to say something?
Yes.
Okay, if you would, state your name. I'm sure everybody knows you, but for those who may not, if you would, just state your name.
Sure, my name's Eric Charles. I'm currently the school board member for District Four in Henry County. And again, I would just like to say, as I said early in our joint meeting with the Board of Education and the Board of Commissioners, I saw this map for the first time when we met, when Commissioner Reed showed it, and I opposed it then, and I still oppose it. And based on the information that was provided, was right now I currently represent District Four, and on this proposed map, I would then switch over to District Five. And I said before, is, I've been in office for ten and a half years now, and I represent District Four. Those are the people, my constituents, in which I roam to serve. And to switch me over to District Five would be, thank you, to switch me over to District Five would, would be, it would be problemsome because there, again, I represent District Four, and to switch me over to District Five, I don't see the disservice in that. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you so, thank you. All right, this is a non-action item tonight. It was for discussion purposes only, a public hearing, and that item will be placed on the August agenda, and I don't know, is that on, what is the date on that? August the, do we have that on August the first or August the second? Do you know, Madam Clerk?
August second.
Okay, that item will be on the Tuesday, August the second, meeting for adoption. And thank you, Ms. Wiley, for that presentation. The next item on the agenda is a resolution authorizing the pursuit of certification as a new HUD urban county. Our presenter is Butch Sanders, County Manager. That's handout number three.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board. I have good news for everyone. Early last week, we were notified by the Department of Housing and Urban Development that we were provisionally eligible for becoming a new urban county because we had met all of the requirements for the Community Development Block Grant Program, which basically means that we have become an entitlement community and eligible without competing for, in this case, about seven hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars a year, which is to be used for low and moderate-income citizens in our community. And the first step, we put a group of four or five people together and went down and visited HUD. We are reaching out to our cities to see if they want to participate with us, but the first step that we need to take is a resolution, which is before you tonight, basically stating our intent to fully qualify for the program for the FY 2012 funding year. And I would ask for your approval of that.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this? Mr. Alata?
I understand that to attain this, we still have to fill out a lot of paperwork. Is that correct to obtain this?
We certainly do. We have, we have to put a five-year plan together as well as an impediment plan for the program. Probably, funding will not be available until July of 2012.
July is the earliest, the money will be available.
Correct.
Any other questions? If not, you have before your resolution authorizing the pursuit of certification as a new HUD urban county, and I will entertain a motion.
Want to approve?
Motion to approve by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Holmes. All in favor? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the appointment to the Henry County Board of Family and Children's Services. I received a letter that we have two appointments that have expired, and also, the request has come from the DFAX interim director, Susan Boggs, to reappoint these two individuals to another term. The first individual who has, whose term has expired is Anita Richardson of 33 North SAC, Kenton Parkway in McDonough, Georgia, and I'd like to ask for a motion to reappoint her to that position. Motion by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Holmes. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. The second appointment is for Dana Clark of 500 East Maze Road in Stockbridge, Georgia, and I'd like to entertain a motion to reappoint her. Motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Alata. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. At this time, I need approval of the July fifth regular meeting minutes. Besides grammatical corrections, are there any additions that need to be made to those minutes? If not, I need a motion to approve. Motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Holder. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. At this time, we are moving into the public comments section of the meeting where citizens are allowed to voice county-related concerns, opinions, et cetera, that are not listed on the agenda. And we do have one individual that has signed up to speak, and that's Fred Gardner of 410 Gresham Drive in Stockbridge. And Mr. Gardner would like to speak about public safety, I'm assuming, in the Walt Stevens Road area. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mr. Gardner.
Good evening, once again.
Five minutes.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, I'm here today to talk to you guys a little bit about what I see as a public safety issue, specifically as it relates to traffic and traffic safety. If you drive on Walt Stevens, yes, sir? Sorry, but I, Commissioner? If you drive up Walt Stevens headed west as you're going into Clayton County, and you come across the bridge over I-75, there's a line of pine trees and some oak and some other type trees that are along that corridor that are now bending over the roadway. As we've seen over the last two, three years with the rise and increase of our thunderstorms in and around the metro area and trees falling on cars and people being injured or killed and probably being damaged, I would love for the Commissioners to please take a look at this. Even though we're in the city of Stockbridge, we're not, the roadway is actually county, still maintained by county DOT. And so we would love for you guys to look at this issue before we do have an incident where we have a thunderstorm come through and some resident citizen of Henry County lose their lives because these trees aren't being maintained, aren't being cut back to a proper provision in terms of the right of ways. And these trees are in the right of way. So they do belong to Henry County and do pose the potential risk to the county having to pay somebody a large amount of funds of our hard-earned tax dollars in these tough times when we could go and prune those trees back to provide for public safety. And Madam Chair, if you'll allow me to indulge, I wanted to ask a question about a previous item but didn't have a chance to. As it relates to congratulating the county on the Community Development Block Grant and Home Funds that you guys will be implementing over the coming years, I would hope that you guys will look strategically at your comprehensive plan and who implements those elements as it relates to housing, housing redevelopment, revitalization, and that these funds go to the right funds go to the right department to manage because that's where the function should be in your planning and your development department. And I hope that you guys would put it in there and have you got credible staff to take care of it, work closely with your counties. We do it now in the city of Griffin, where I work, and implement CDBG and home funds, and where I worked in the city of Decatur, Illinois, in community development, implementing CDBG funds and home funds. And so I hope that you guys would put these funds to good use and be very careful, be very careful where you put them because obviously these funds are targeted toward 51% low to moderate income individuals or districts so we don't get in any trouble with HUD. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gardner. Mr. Mickel, were you clear on where the issues with the trees were at so we could get you to go, someone from your department to go out and take a look at that?
We certainly can do that.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. County Manager, any comments for public session?
Just a couple of things. I'd just like to tell Mr. Gardner there will be plenty of opportunity for public input into the development of our consolidated plan for our program. I look forward to his participation. I appreciate the indulgence of the board with the many last-minute items that just came up, such as that resolution in the last week of county business. And I appreciate the professionalism of our city, of our county clerk in the way she incorporated everything into the agenda. I do appreciate that.
Ms. County Attorney, anything for public session?
No, ma'am.
Okay, there's one item that was brought to my attention today that I want to mention to our citizens. There is a town hall meeting that's being held. It's called Get a Move On, and it's a 10-county town hall meeting on transportation growth and the future of Metro Atlanta. This meeting will be from 8:30 a.m. to noon at the Louder Milk Center, and it's going to be a kickoff for a year-long citizen conversation that's leading up to the regional transportation sales tax referendum. And again, that's being hosted at the ARC. That's going to be this Saturday morning. We're going to post some information on the county's website because they would like to have at least 25 Henry County citizens participate. They want a total of 250, 25 from each of the counties to participate so that you can have some input into the future of the metro region. And so we will get that information up on the website. And I apologize for the short notice as far as even being able to get that to the newspaper, but I was just informed today by one of the organizers that they only had one person from Henry County signed up for that event. And so we certainly want to be represented on Saturday if you have an opportunity to do that. The upcoming meetings and events, Monday, August the 1st at 9:00 a.m., we have a workshop meeting. Tuesday, August the 2nd at 9:00 a.m., we have a regular meeting. Monday, August the 15th at 9:00 a.m., and Tuesday, August the 16th at 6:30 p.m., these are both regular meetings. At this time, I do need a motion to convene into executive session for the purposes of potential pending litigation, personnel, and land acquisition matters. Motion by Mr. Alata, second by Mr. Holmes. All in favor? I need a motion to reconvene into public session. Motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Stamey. All in favor? Motion carries 5-0. At this time, I need a motion for approval of an affidavit and resolution pertaining to executive session. Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Holmes. All in favor? Motion carries 5-0. Mr. Alata has a brief announcement he would like to make.
I'll make a brief. I just want to announce that I do have a town hall meeting on July 28, Thursday at 7:00 p.m. at the Water Authority Hall, District Two, and anybody else that wants to attend, love to have you.
Thank you, Mr. Alata. If there's no further business to come before the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Holder. All in favor? Motion carries 5-0. We stand adjourned.